Alright, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the African School Board of Education Tuesday, October twenty first, twenty twenty five, seven P M. Roll call.
Mrs. Ernest.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. Lyde.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
National Honor Society.
You guys can point right there. You can face the camera if you want.
Oh.
Yeah. Sideways looking at, looking at our audience. We don't usually have a very big audience anymore and at the conclusion of this activity is going to probably get small again. If you would, please introduce yourselves or...
Hi, I'm Shore Ellington. I'm the National Honor Society Advisor and these are a few of my seniors. Some more of my seniors are out there, but they're gonna talk about NHS.
Okay.
Uh, I'm Melissa Rickett. Uh, and all year we do pledge announcements in the mornings at the high school. Uh, we do tutoring during our study holes or Wildcat times every day, at least twice a day pretty much.
Hi, I'm Algo Corizer. I'm NHS Secretary and during the summer we work the Wildcat team. And then we also did the Wildcat Welcome with Student Council in August, the week before school, we gave school supplies and haircuts.
I'm Taylor Skorowski. I'm the Vice President. Uh, this fall, like last Friday, we just tapped in the new members and then we have the installation of officers and introduction of new members in November. And then we'd like to invite all of you to the convention.
Okay, um, I'm Kate Southard. I'm the Public Relations. And in the winter, we do our Community Christmas Project with Student Council, which we, our NHS part is we get gifts for the families. We each get assigned kids, I mean, gift them whatever they will eat, whatever they want. And then we have the blood drive, which is put on by us and then Mr. Desco organizes it all and we hold it in the gym.
Whoa, 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 whoa. You, Mr. Desco sent the game, Mrs. Ellington. You didn't attend that one. You didn't attend that one.
Um, and then in spring, we have grandparents breakfast, which we invite all of our grandparents, for us and student council, and we eat breakfast. Um, we get our awards for the year and then chamber crowd, same for us.
I really enjoyed the grandparent breakfast last year. It was, uh, I think it was, everybody had a good time there, enjoyed themselves, all the grandparents, and I appreciate it. We thank you for all the good things that you're doing for the school and keep up the good work. Approximately, how many members do you have?
Uh, we ju- we have eight. We had eight seniors. We took in fifteen new members, three of which are seniors, so we have twenty-three? I mean, was my three's alright? Twenty-three.
That worked. Well, thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate you having me.
Thank you for having us.
How about, uh, our cheerleaders? Are you getting anything else they can call? Well, what can you tell us about the group?
Uh, actually, we've got a wonderful group of seniors, actually all around. Um, the cheer squad has been excellent this year. Um, they've done really well at keeping the crowd in the student section going. We had a great season, so it's always fun when we're with them, so.
It is. Okay, are they, is anybody gonna speak here? Are they all?
She wants to be.
You gotta interview yourself.
Hi, I'm Abby. The cheerleaders have been doing great. We've been the cheerleader on our team. We've been winning, so it's not worth it.
It is.
Big game coming up.
Yeah. Big game. All them free student tickets going out, the student section ought to be packed. I imagine the whole stadium will be packed.
We started the new tradition this year of the shaker palms to shake the stadium. They seem to go over pretty well, so.
I forgot to get them, but my wife, she reminded me. It hit finally about two, two or three weeks into this season, I finally got her one. Uh, we appreciate your support of the team and, and all the good things that you do and, uh, help keep all the students motivated and okay, so.
They go into the community and do a lot of volunteering. We do a lot of face painting at various, um, like we was just at the food truck festival, um, doing face painting. They do the Moose Christmas Party and the D and G Christmas Party.
Uh-huh.
We're gonna not only be able to volunteer.
Good. Well, thank you for that. Thank you for your service. Please have a seat. Girls soccer. Coach, you wanna tell us a little bit about this group and then let them talk?
Yeah, this is, uh, four of my five seniors I had this year. All great leaders. Um, they've all been really good for our program. Season fortunately came to an end in the penalty shootout, uh, last week. Um, still a little heartbroken from that, probably not as much as these girls are. But it was a good season, had a lot of, uh, great moments. Overall, our record after we used ten, five, and two. Um, and we beat OG, who hasn't been beaten in the league, um, in four years, so it was a great moment for us this year to, to enjoy that.
Yeah.
It was awesome. Awesome time for us, so.
So, girls, what do you think? How was the season from your perspective?
It was pretty good.
Yeah.
There was a lot of memories made.
Yeah. I'm sure that last one had to be tough, two overtimes and shootout, wow. But, uh, overall, I think, you know, from everything that I've heard, that we did very well and, you know, we appreciate you the way you represented this group. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Thanks. Boys soccer. A little chilly. Yeah. Now, would you rather be playing in the warm weather or the cooler weather? I guess it'd be a question.
I'd prefer to be playing.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate you coming out tonight. Coach Smith, you wanna tell us a little bit about your players?
Uh, yep, I have five of our six seniors tonight. We went seven, seven, and four this year. We beat a state ranked team for the first time in football history in Ottawaville. We beat Elida for the first time since twenty nineteen. We finished fourth in the WBL back-to-back years. That would be our best finish once again since two thousand twelve. So overall, good year, couple awesome victories, couple heartbreaking defeats. Heard that season's over, but this group's been great at changing the culture of the soccer program.
Yeah. Guys, what do you think? What's that? Season went well? Yeah, I'd say it went well, but, uh, yeah, you, you know, both you and the girls, uh, I failed to mention with the girls, you made the sectional finals, correct?
Ours was sectional semi.
Sectional semi, isn't it? You were finals?
Yeah.
Okay. Wanna get that on the record?
No, ours was final. Ours was the final.
Okay. That's what I had in my notes, but, yeah.
That'll change how many teams are running today. It threw me off.
Well, appreciate you having us here. Thank you for representing your school as well as you did. Uh, you know, heard a lot of positive comments about the way boys behave, so that's a good thing. Thanks again for coming tonight. Envirathon.
I have, uh, our senior here, Melissa, who's already here for NHS Envirathon, and, uh, this year we're going to Montpelier, Williams County. So, uh, done for so years I've been doing it. We went all the way from Toledo to Williams County this year. Last year, we were in Kalida. We've been to the Galleon area as well, so we just kinda travel, take the test to the last Wednesday, April.
Now, what kind of test is that?
It's a Howard Education Test.
Okay.
So basically, um, they'll take tests on soils, forestry, wildlife, current events.
Alright. So it's not a quiz bowl type of thing?
No, it's a, basically, they get a color-coded, like, stipendure and you follow your leader, kinda your supervisor, right? How many other teams were you with last year, last time?
Like, five or six.
Five or six schools or teams are together.
Okay.
And then they have a supervisor and they just take the test as a, it's a scan track, like, testing tape as a.
Okay. And again, that's what date?
That's always the last Wednesday, April.
Last Wednesday, April. Well, good luck with that. Are you having fun with it?
Yeah, I always enjoy everything about the weather.
Yeah. Well, and I hope the weather's good, 'cause you know April sometimes is gonna be a...
Yeah, we've actually had that. We've had thirty-five degree weather, seventy-five degree weather, so it can definitely be the whole gamma thing. And sometimes they have, like, uh, you're really nurturing it where there's no running water. And other times, you've got cafeterias like this to sit in, so it just depends on where you're going.
Yeah. Well, good luck and I hope it's a great experience for you. Thank you. Yeah, thanks, good. Uh, cross-country, you can stay.
Yeah, you can sit down. I can stay.
Okay. Girls first, huh?
Well, only girls we have. We have no senior boys.
Yeah, I, uh, I noticed that. Both teams are relatively young, uh, from when I looked at your rosters, uh, top, from top to bottom.
Savannah here is the only senior. She's a first-year runner, even though her family dates back to running from our bees. Uncle, is your uncle Dan?
Tony.
Tony. Uh, her one uncle still has a record at Spencerville in middle school.
Well, that's a problem.
From nineteen eighty-eight.
Mm-hmm.
So that's quite an accomplishment and still a stage. And, but, uh, Savannah's done a great job. She ran in the district meet last, uh, Saturday. Our girls qualified as the fifth place team. We were one point off of being fourth place, um, for the regional meet, which will be next Saturday in Tiffin. And then her brother Will qualified as individual. He was the last guy to qualify. I knew it was pretty close and I was kinda counting down on my phone, 'cause at the meets now, the, can ladies pop in it automatically when the race has come through? So you kinda followed out. I was trying to count. I was like, oh, is he number twelve or number thirteen? Because he had to be twelve and luckily, he was twelve and he advanced on too. But if you look at the pictures there, I mean, we've got some nice young, uh, another brother of hers that had a wonderful middle school season and we had some other middle school boys, so we got some kids coming back. And, uh, kids have been working really hard though. They're young, but it takes a little bit of time.
Sure.
To do that, especially when you've had a previous year senior class that ran for three years and, and they kinda take this, take the varsity spots up and the kids behind them, they kinda go into a race now and they don't have to run their hardest.
Yeah. Well, with the youth that you have now, it looks like you could have groups that will run for three years together.
Hopefully, most definitely, hopefully, hopefully, they can, uh, get two teams back to the, uh, regional meet. We had the boys team go, we've had the girls team go, but never at the same time. Hopefully, that'd be a great thing for.
So that's this Saturday at Tiffin.
Yep.
The girls run at eleven fifty.
Fifty and the boys at twelve thirty.
Well, good luck to you and thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Didn't forget this time. If you'd like to go, you can. If you wanna stay, we'll be here for a while. Look at it run.
Okay. Uh, next on the agenda is board responses from previous communications. We have none. Uh, next is hearing of public items on the agenda. We also have none there. Uh, next on the agenda is items from board president. Uh, first up is administrator's report. Mr. Staley.
Can I leave a room here? I'll move out of the way.
That's true. I tried, hey, I was trying, alright? I was trying.
Don't be maybe right in the way that you're either. Yeah, so you guys all have a physical copy of everything. Kinda look forward here, so just kinda, kinda normal here for our October meeting. I'm gonna take you guys through a little bit of the state report card data. Um, talk a little bit again, kinda where we're at with our career ed stuff, uh, CTE grant that we, we got, where we still have another year and a half to spend some funds. Talk a little bit about some of the physical improvements we made in building again. We've been chipping away and then just give you guys a preview of stuff coming up here in November and December. If you'd like to show your faces at any of those events, uh, we're always welcome to have you guys with us. Alright, so report card data overall, three and a half stars out of five. So that's about a half star step back from where we normally are traditionally. Been a four. Um, not a ton really changed, to be quite honest with you, and I'll kinda go through these components a little bit. So we've, over time, usually been about four in achievement and I'll dig into that. Progress is where we went back from a three to a two. Um, so that's probably the half-star reflection in there. And then gap closing, we actually went up a star, um, to a five out of five, uh, in terms of how our subgroups are, are performing here. So, dig it into the achievement component again. So, with achievement, you're talking about what's called performance index, alright? So they're, they're essentially assigning a numerical value to the levels of performance that your kids have, right? So you have advanced plus, you have advanced, you have accomplished, um, you have your proficient, your basic, and your limited. And each one of those scoring categories is weighted by, by an amount, depending on how many kids score in those categories. We've, we've pretty much been in this range, I think, for a long time, predating the, staying the same the past, you know, five, six, seven, eight years. Uh, we're kind of in that eighty-five to eighty-seven, uh, PI range typically. Uh, you can see our individual scores over here. Again, I always kinda take this part with a grain of salt until I can see how we compare to other places. A number's just a number, uh, until you can really compare it to other schools. So, once again, you guys have this at the back. I know it's kinda small. So I always try and break a comparison down in three different kind of groups. I look at Allen County. Obviously, it's geographically close, the schools that are around us. I look at the Western Buckeye League, 'cause that is our conference. Again, it's in similar schools. And then I always reference, um, OD puts out the twenty most comparable districts to you in the state of Ohio. Okay, and I know that some of those schools are schools that are not regionally close, but to me, that's who the state of Ohio says you look like. That's who your student body looks like based on your socioeconomic factors, okay? So to me, that's still an important one to look at. So if you look at WBL, or sorry, if you look at Allen County here, again, all these tests in green, we scored higher than schools. The yellow, I just called negligible. You're kinda within a percentage point, you know, here or there. And the red would be schools that beat us in a test. Um, Bluffton, Grove, and then Spencerville beat us in a few this year. Besides that, we, we beat the majority of, of schools and, and other things. Um, obviously, Bluffton and Grove, if you look at their socioeconomic numbers, they're a little different than us. But either way, um, that's kinda the, the area here. The other thing I did, and you'll see this off to the side, I tried to include this year, uh, the percent of students we had score in categories. And I referenced that against the other, other schools as well. One thing that I, I'm proud of, and I, and this has been something, again, this predated me, we've stayed pretty consistent here, is basically about fifty percent of our kids typically score in the highest categories. Okay, so half of our student body is scoring in that advanced plus, in advanced and accomplished categories. So when half of your student body, I think, is in those upper echelon categories, that's a really positive thing. That's a really significant thing. We then have about a quarter of our kids in proficient, which means they're passing the test, right? And then we have about a quarter of our kids in those basic and limited categories, which means they are not passing the test, okay? Now, if you look at the Western Buckeye League and us, we pretty much beat everyone in every test with the exception of Walpaw, beating us in one eighth-grade math test. And then here you see Ottawa and Landorf are broken into two because they are two separate buildings. Ottawa has their own elementary, Landorf has their own elementary. And you can see, when you even look at those schools, Landorf, here, here's one thing that I think's telling, okay? And this kinda speaks to how the state does things a little bit, but, so you got eleven schools there, including us, right? And times seven tests, which are the amount taken in grade six, seven, and eight. So seventy-seven tests were taken by the Western Buckeye League by their middle school students. Seven tests out of seventy-seven got passed. Five by Landorf, two by us. Nobody else passed a single, single test in the WBL. You know, and that's, I mean, again, when, when, when eighty percent is the benchmark, that's what they want you to meet. But we got seven tests out of seventy-seven meeting that benchmark, you know, just in our own conference, and we have two of those. And again, Landorf, I would say, is a little bit different with, you know, six percent economically disadvantaged population compared to, to, you know, some of our numbers and things of, of that nature. You look at these similar districts in the state of Ohio, kinda same pattern, you know, eighth-grade math, obviously, we'd be the area that, area that we struggled with, you know, kinda the most here, right? But besides that, when you look at twenty schools ranking us against twenty schools that supposedly look like us, we're still scoring significantly higher, um, than those schools in the achievement component, you know? We're winning a lot of those, okay? You guys have that data. I won't, you know, belabor it and go any further into it, so you can look further in those numbers if you'd like. Uh, that's the achievement component. So the, the progress component, again, this is value-added, okay? So this is supposed to be measuring growth, okay? I will tell you, as of even ten minutes ago, if I click here on what's supposed to show value-added, they still have last year's data. Um, they haven't put anything out. It's not updated by the state of Ohio yet. Um, you know, that has our three-star rating from a year ago in there. It was supposed to be out mid-October. I don't know if the government shut down or whatever, but that data is not updated. I'm not holding my breath that it will be here in the next few weeks either, but we'll, we'll see, okay? So that would be the area, I guess, of the three categories that we wanna, you know, probably pay the most attention to when we can kinda really look at that data a little bit further in detail when it does become available. I will tell you again, you know, you look at a school, I gave you that, that statistic with us in Landorf. I will tell you, when you look at Landorf's report card, they also had a tool in progress. You know, which is part of that, that we scored at a higher level and that margin for growth is, is smaller, I don't know. Um, but again, once that comes out, that's something that we can look into, um, in terms of, you know, trying to bring that, that category up a little bit. The last category is what's called your gap closing. Your gap closing, they basically take your subgroups and they set out a benchmark, okay, of what they think you should meet with your subgroups in terms of PI, performance index again. So they're, they're trying to say, hey, within your subgroups, you need, you're getting this many points for kids that are proficient, that are accomplished, that are, that are advanced. In all those categories, but the special ed category, we are out ahead of the state benchmark, okay? They're trying to put us here and you can see where we're at. So we, that, that's kinda why we got a five out of five in terms of the gap, uh, gap closing, uh, the pattern on the grade card. It's just we were, we were exceeding those benchmarks that they laid out. Um, I do have, let me go back there once, actually. I did put another document and I will, you know, maybe get into everything with you guys here, but I wanted to give you a little bit of longitudinal data too, if you wanted to look at anything. So, you have this document as well. What I did here is I basically, um, went through those same groups, WBL, Allen County, and comparable districts. And I went back and individually looked up everyone's grade card and averaged the stars that they had in each category over four years. So you could kinda see over a four-year span where schools were. Again, you know, you look at us in achievement, hey, we, past four years, we've been at four stars in the achievement category. You know, you see us in progress. We had a four, three, three, a two. Um, gap closing, some fives, went down to four, came back to a five, and you can see that same data. I also included off to the side, um, just some school information about number of students in those schools, special ed population in those schools, and, uh, students classified as economically disadvantaged in those schools. That gives you a little bit of apples-to-apples kinda comparison when you're trying to look at numbers. And again, we scored, when you average, you know, WBL tied for first in achievement, tied for second in progress over four years, tied for first in gap closing over four years, you know? Allen County tied for second in achievement over four years, progress ranked fourth in the county, gap closing tied for first. You know, and again, that's the, uh, the twenty most comparable districts. There's a few of them that don't have numbers just because they're in a seven-twelve building. Um, so their report card data's gonna obviously come out different than ours when they're including highs, high school test scores, uh, in their, in their data, okay? That's what you see there. Maybe onto some more fun stuff, okay? Uh, CTE update here, just things we have left to purchase, okay? Um, we got a laser engraver yet to purchase. We already have our one, but we took the opportunity, this grant, uh, right in to get a second one, especially, uh, our, our one is aging. At some point, it's gonna break down and the maintenance cost is probably gonna exceed what the value of it is. Uh, so I wanted to get another engraver in here before that that happened. Uh, we have some Wildcat Weekly media equipment to purchase yet. We've already purchased some. Uh, that's our student newscast. Uh, multiple 3D printers, um, to, to come in yet. We have some additional VEX robotics equipment. I'm gonna show you some of these things here in a minute. We do have some additional construction career cluster tools and then some funds to, uh, use for some PD with CTE career-type stuff as well, okay? So you guys earlier, um, so the state of Ohio this year got rid of, there used to be a waiver that you could apply for, for career technical education in the state of Ohio. They ended that. So it is now required that schools have to have CTE pathways in career technical education in middle school, okay? So that middle school waiver's gone. The good news for us is when we started all of our stuff with Project Leadaway three years ago, PLTW was an automatic waiver for that anyway. So everything that we started three years ago before this went away has already put us in line and on track to meet any requirement that we have in terms of providing CTE instruction in, in the middle school, okay? So, you know, go, going back in time, we started with our design and modeling course. We then implemented a computer science for innovators and makers course. And kinda the exciting part for me is, this is like, we're kind of in the last part now of this kind of four-year journey. First year being a vision and then three years being actually implementing these things over time. So we're getting ready to implement our robotics and automation course this year, okay? And I'll show you some of that stuff here in a, here in a second. You know, the cool thing with design and modeling, again, what's it trying to do? It's just trying to build some basic team skills, get kids to start to be creative, um, to think about, you know, how they could apply the design process, um, to, to real life. We actually brought that to life last year. Um, we kinda took the opportunity with what happened with, this was on the news and I realized this was last spring, it was after I talked to you guys. With Ms. Griffiths and her leg amputation. So one of the things that our kids do in design modeling is they build prosthetics. And they do them kind of rudimentary, as you can see in the, the, the graphic, right? But that's the kids working through group work, the design process, how to create, how, how to make something that could possibly function. So a fun thing for last year that we were able to do is at the end of the year, we actually brought in the prostheses team that Mrs. Griffiths had. Their staff came in, did an assembly with our sixth graders. They actually went through their designs, checked them out, ranked them, and showed us how this at a sixth-grade level becomes this in a business model and in real life. So that was a, a cool, real-world application of stuff that the kids are doing, um, in, in class. Our seventh graders take computer, CSIM, Computer Science for Innovators and Makers, again, um, you know, just starting with some basic hard and soft. Again, um, you know, just starting with some basic hard and soft programming with computer design. And then when you get into robotics and automation, now we're really actually talking about, you know, mechanisms and how do we make something go? So we just got in sixty-four thousand dollars worth of our VEX robotics equipment, uh, during this past month. Um, that's part of our CTE grant. Again, those were not school funds, that was, that was funds from the state of Ohio. And, you know, what you can see here is, you know, our, our kids, our organization of all the parts and things that were getting laid out, organized for the second semester, um, all of our design kits that include the brains, uh, you know, the, 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 the goal here is basically, you know, we're gonna have things by the end of the quarter semester where kids are actually designing, building, creating something that is actually gonna function and move in a mechanism, okay? Uh, we, they do race cars, uh, they've done amusement park rides before. Um, it'll, it'll be kind of a cool thing to actually see now, our kids bring this stuff to life, you know, here in the next, uh, two, two nine weeks coming up, uh, beginning here in November. So that course will unveil, get rolled out. We do have staff trained in it, one called App Creators that we have not used yet with our CTE stuff, besides trying to integrate it into some other courses. This one's a kind of neat one, and I got word back from the state today that they would actually let me do a revision on our grant with some money. Um, I had a teacher ask last year to go do a training for a medical detective's course, which- It's our, it's, it's our health instructor, Mrs. Ozarzak. Now, we still have to teach our state standards in grades seven and eight, but this is a course I think kids would be kind of interested in, so we're trying to figure out how to integrate this into our sixth-grade health curriculum a little bit, where basically students are medical detectives and they try and analyze and diagnose disease, solve med- solve medical mysteries through projects and labs. So we think we've probably secured some funding through our CTE grant where we can put some money towards this a little bit to integrate some of those soft concepts, at least into sixth-grade health. Think it'll interest kids. I think it kind of aligns with our pathways in our CAT program at high school where we have a lot of students that have gone through Landmark Memorial, St. Rita's, um, you know, and going into the healthcare field to spark the interest of some kids in, in healthcare a little bit. So that's kind of where we've gone. Tia actually got an award, she was one of eight teachers, uh, in the nation to get this PLTW gateway, that's the middle school program, it's called Gateway. Uh, one of eight teachers in, in, in the United States to be recognized as, uh, as she's kind of un- enrolled these things the past few years. We have time to do all this, obviously, because we built it into our special schedule, um, and it's part of our, our normal rotation. Physical updates to the building. Um, I know you guys, most of you have been down there, I think, but that was maybe at the start of the school year. Flipping our library, uh, to get our innovation lab going, I think was a really good decision. Again, I thought our library before was the largest room in our building, but maybe the, the least utilized in terms of space. This has been a perfect fit to move the library over now to where Tia used to be before our CTE renovations. Still can house all our books, it still can get a class in there to get stuff checked out. It still gives us a quiet space if students need to go take a makeup test, some things. So it kind of meets what we needed to meet, it's probably just a little better use of space. Uh, besides some shabby carpeting, I'm gonna work on maybe trying to get this cleaned up here, uh, in November when parent teacher conferences come. Um, but overall, it's been a, been a good use of space for us. Which allowed us to do this is, you know, to really get some use now out of our study hall and innovation lab, kind of split with our dividers here in the middle, study hall aside, some innovation space on the other. Now, this is unfinished still here, we have, we have multiple three-D printers that we're gonna end up bringing over on this corner here yet. Um, a, a screen if esports would ever take off at the middle school level, okay? So this isn't quite done, but we're well on our way to getting that area cleaned up and making it just more functional, um, for the school building for our kids. Uh, weight room, again, another physical update change to the building, new weight rooms in. Uh, I think the wrestling team is down there lifting right now, uh, you know, which is great. Uh, we needed two spaces on campus for athletic programs, uh, we just didn't have enough space. This, this meets that need, at least in the short term. Um, and our hope is, once we get to second semester and our eighth grade has second semester health and, and PE, you know, we're probably not gonna do this with our sixth and seventh grades, but with our eighth graders, we're gonna try and build a little bit of a strength and conditioning component kind of into eighth grade to start teaching kids just to get a life skill, you know, basic fitness concepts about things that they can do, things they can even do at home, you know, to, to help stay healthy. Speaking of which, we are also doing this, uh, Jim Tressel has a fitness challenge. Um, we didn't get in on the first wave. If I don't have to get in on a pilot and I can get in the second round, I always choose to get in the second round and let them pilot first, so we did. Um, Shawnee did this, uh, did this past fall, they were one of the pilot schools. So we'll do this second semester, um, essentially, it's just this kind of ninety-day, um, promotion of how to build healthy habits, physical activities, sleep nutrition. Every kid gets a workbook for free, part of it, and Mrs. Ozarzak's gonna try and incorporate that in with her eighth grade second semester on this, uh, Lieutenant Governor's Healthy Ohio Fitness Challenge. Now, there are some, I will tell you, on the fitness thing, there's some stuff out there too, just so you guys are aware of. I got this email today that there's a, there's a House Bill right now, I think it's like House Bill three or four. And it's talking about, it's, uh, it's a committee, I think it's the third hearing. They're talking about requiring schools to provide two thirty-minute recesses a day for grades K to eight. Which, once again, I, I feel like our staff, we do a good job of recognizing that kids need to get outside some and stretch and do some things. We get kids out of here usually about halfway after lunch, we get them out on the turf and let them run around and, and, you know. I will tell you, when the state's requiring it, CTE instruction, you know, there, it, you, you wanna try and bring up test scores and you wanna do these things with your, your assist periods. And then all of a sudden, we get a curveball like that saying, our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders gotta have thirty-minute recess in the morning, thirty-minute in the afternoon. I don't know what that looks like right now, okay? Um, I think it's great for kids to be healthy, but that's a, a little bit of an area of concern I have when we have a lot of forty-two-minute periods anyway, you know? Uh, we do have some blocked scheduling. And that's one thing, even looking back on the grade card, I should include it with you guys, you know, we, we, we've looked at some things. You know, um, eighth grade, for example, ELA. We don't block schedule or ELA in eighth grade. We do it sixth and seventh. So those kids are getting basically ninety minutes of instruction for reading, okay? The reason we don't in eighth grade is because we offer high school Spanish. So, you know, we have to try and kind of make those decisions. Could we block stuff and maybe gain more reading time that could perhaps improve some reading scores, maybe? Do we wanna get rid of high school Spanish being offered to eighth graders? I don't know that we wanna do that because it's positive for a lot of kids, okay, to start knocking out their, their, that credit beforehand. And the same thing we have on the math end too, you look at with math, you know, we offer eighth grade algebra. Well, if you put those algebra kits in regular scores for your eighth grade math, of course, your eighth grade math scores are gonna go up. And I'm not saying this is exclusive to us, because a lot of schools offer, offer eighth grade algebra. But if we did offer eighth gr- eighth grade algebra, those scores that would be included with our stuff would raise on the eighth grade math side. But again, we're not offering algebra to eighth graders. And for our high achieving kids, our kids that wanna be engineers, like, I don't know that I necessarily liked the idea of having those kids not being able to take five maths over the course of their educational career because they need to get to calculus before they get to college and some things, you know? So I think there, I, I guess what I'm telling you is, to me, there's some give and take when you look at some of that data of some of the decisions that you have to make. And, you know, again, could we, could we do reading and math intervention during our assist career period every day? Good. I still don't know that's the best thing for kids. You know, when I see Tony Miller's class out here with robots and Spears Falls today doing coding, I think that's a good thing for kids. I think it's a good thing for kids in the middle school to at least be exposed to different career ideas, even though they don't know what they're gonna do, you know? So I, I just wanna let you know, those are some of the things that I think about when you're thinking about, well, how do you wanna address some of these things? But at the same time, you don't wanna, you don't wanna take away some things that we have that are positive too for kids, you know? And I, and I hate to say it, some of the kids that if you did some more intensive remediation maybe with, to maybe try and raise your scores a little bit, those might be the same population of kids that really need to hear about career. Because that might be their focus once they get into high school, you know? So just, just some things that, that we think about and we, we've talked about a little bit. Um, involvement with kids, uh, so three-eighty-seven, that's our current building enrollment, which again is down. That last, uh, class last year was big, the high school freshman class was the biggest, I think, grade that we have in our school district right now. Um, so usually we're about that four-hundred mark, probably, you know, ten to twenty kids underneath where we are. Hundred fourteen kids that are in band, hundred and three in choir right now, we had ten cheer, nine cross-country athletes, thirty-four football, eighteen volleyball, seven kids in quasible, hundred fifty-six kids in Lifewise Academy, eighty student council members, now that's a big number. Um, basically, you know, twenty, twenty-five, twenty, thirty per grade. Part of that's by design. Um, some of the kids that we have in student council aren't in some other activities. They're not sports kids. So we've tried to make a concerted effort, you know, to make sure some of those kids have maybe another group or organization they can be involved with. Now, Ms. Griffiths, who took over our student council this year, did lay out some specific requirements. So at the end of this first nine weeks, we're gonna lose some kids because of grades or attendance or some things, which we still wanted to kind of hold them to a, a threshold, you know? But at the same time, we did wanna encourage some of those kids to be part of a group and be able to be involved and do some things. Um, our Wildcat Weekly, so our newscast is at twenty kids. Bonnie Wicker took this over from, uh, Mrs. Ozar, or, uh, Mrs. Sheeran, sorry, this year. It's been kind of a good thing, she's kind of redesigned some things, she's doing here a little bit, I think. Um, we, I'm gonna show you some pictures here of those guys here in a second. Um, student things to highlight, so we have our Wildcat Way stuff that we do. Again, I just, somebody told me a long time ago, try and catch kids doing something good, you know? Not always catch them doing something, something wrong. And we've tried to highlight those kind of kids. Like, these are kids that are teachers right now in the month of September, you know? Uh, Noah McKissick, Quentin Cash, Boston Freeze, and Ashton St. Clair in seventh, and Isabel Lordsmann and Brendan Nugan. Those are kids that are teachers in those grade levels, saying, you know what, we caught you doing something good. And we try and highlight those kids, obviously, at our ascending assemblies and then kind of we do our, our principal's lunch with them. Um, we don't have a ton of academic kids to highlight right now in terms of recognition, just as we're finishing the quarter, okay? It's done the end of this week. Um, athletically, uh, Mr. Grim got up here and talked about, uh, some of his cross-country kids. Lucas Benzman had a really good cross-country season. Um, Eden and Eli Foltz, who have never run before, went out this year, and they had two really good cross-country seasons. Um, on the gridiron, um, seventh grade football went six and two. Eighth grade football went six and two with six shutouts in eight games. So we had a couple pretty good back-to-back classes there, coupled with the class that's a freshman class. You know, we've had three now classes in a row that have won some football games, so that's a positive thing. Volleyball, um, I think seventh grade was a little over five-hundred, I think eighth grade was a little under five-hundred. Um, but seventh grade had a pretty, pretty good year and they both competed really well in the WBL tournaments. I think both won two or three games in, in the WBL tournaments here, uh, the last couple of weeks. So some positives there. Wildcats in the community, again, so Bonnie Wicker, uh, took over, um, our Wildcat Weekly. And one of the cool things that we had the opportunity do, uh, to, to work with was, was Hometown Stations. They're doing a segment called Beyond Our, Beyond Classroom with Connor Prince. So we kind of jumped on the opportunity to do that, we thought it really fit what our kids are doing already with Wildcat Weekly. Uh, I don't know, did you guys have, did anybody see, I have this in here if you guys wanna watch it, did anybody have a chance to see this on the news? You guys, okay? So, again, they had us, uh, they wanted everybody to target the local business, okay? And we didn't wanna go to Procter and Gamble or Four, we didn't wanna go to, you know, it's somebody that's a local business owner that is kind of poured into our community a little bit. We gave three options to kids and they kind of settled here on, uh, Chris Foltz and Full Sign Pro. He's done a lot of work for the school over the years. Um, so it was real fun to go down and see though when, uh, Hometown Stations and our kids, you know, we bust them down. They had a chance to go in and, and interview Foltz and, and Shane Cash and see what they're doing in there, learn a little bit about their business and build just some, some good relationships. And then on the journalism end, you know, that's what they're doing. They gotta talk to actual journalists a little bit about, you know, how, how do you do these segments or? I mean, even, it, it was great to see because, you know, Connor started his first segment and then he actually boxed what he was saying and it was like, cut! And it was good for our kids to see like, hey, when you start filming, this happens to, this happens to people, right? It's not just you guys, where you gotta, nope, okay, we gotta do a second take on this. Um, so it was positive and our kids that interviewed Chris did a, did a really good job. Um, Porter Jenkins, um, Eliana Harden were two of them that did a really good job, uh, talking to, to Mr. Foltz. Stuff we have coming up, uh, end of the first quarter, so we have staff PD day this Friday. Um, just trying to do some functional things with staff, uh, in some, some rotations. Uh, especially at the start of the year, I always like to just, with stuff you can have happen medically. I have a nurse go through, she does a thirty-minute refresher just on the EpiPegs, the diabetics, the, all of those things in case we would have something happen later in the school year. Damien Tibbs, um, will be doing, uh, a law enforcement update course from the Allen County Sheriff's Department. Um, and then we have a new internet kind of filtering system called GoGuardian this year. We switched from, uh, classroom relay from Lightspeed. So Tim Vernick, our tech director, is gonna come in and do a, a segment with teachers, just a little bit of PD on how to utilize GoGuardian maybe with some of the things that they don't know yet about it. So it should be kind of a functional day and then the staff has the rest of the, the, the day to, to do data entry. We have parent teacher conferences coming up the week of November third through sixth. A full-scale evacuation drill that we will do in conjunction with the elementary and the high school, okay? That's coming up on November third, where we'll kind of move from building to building and, and, and look into some of our reunification practices. Iowa CoGet testing, that is our gifted testing that we do with sixth graders, also coming up here real quick. Veterans Day Assembly, if anybody's interested in attending, that will be on Veterans Day this year on the eleventh. All right, and we are getting in all that information right now and trying to get our video created for that assembly. It's always a good day here. Um, first quarter academic, athletic, extr- uh, curricular recognition assembly. Again, we just try to recognize kids for doing good stuff in all those areas. That'll be on Friday, November fourteenth. And then our annual kind of middle school band and choir holiday concert, uh, is on the fifteenth of December. So, stuff that's all coming up. Hi Zach, no Wildcats, so.
Thank you.
Joel, do you need me to get you to your computer? Or you got it?
See if you can, yeah. See if you can at least get my screen back up.
Good, I got you, I got you here.
I, I don't want you, Mr. Lighty, I'll make one.
All right. Low lighting, Mike.
All right, you're good. All right, thanks, Dan.
So, Mr. Staley, I'd, I'd like to comment on your, on your presentation. In this packet, what I see here is, the word that comes to my mind is balance. So you leaf through this and you see the focus on academics, the focus on the workforce development. You know, whether it's in robotics, engineering, workplace, marketplace, marketing, student activities, community, volunteerism, medical, I, I mean, all the words are in here. So I, I congratulate you and your team on doing a great job of providing this balanced education and opportunities for our students. I think the job of our school is to provide exposure to careers and activities maybe you didn't know existed. Involvement in those things and development toward what you ultimately wanna be as a productive member of society.
Hundred percent.
So, thank you, Mr. Estes, thank you for the work you do with this.
I appreciate you recognizing that, because sometimes I think we get caught up looking at specific things and like you just said, I mean, the idea is, we want the kids when they walk out of here to eventually just become good citizens, good community members. And it has to be, in my, my, a balanced approach to those things because they, they don't know what it's gonna do right now, you know? Like, they can barely walk down the hallway sometimes with each other right now, you know? I had sixteen eighth-grade football boys up here trying to get them to turn in their equipment and clean tables and things before you guys walk in here. You know, so we're, we're just trying to provide those opportunities, that exposure, you know? On the community end of things, just figure out what their niche is. And as they get into high school, they're gonna refine it, you know, those kids that are engineers, they're, that, that's their thing, they won't latch on to it, you know? And they're gonna be able to take those advanced courses and that's gonna push them somewhere. Those kids that, hey, you're not going to a four-year college and that is fine, you know? Like, you're gonna find your thing too, you know? And I just think we'll continue to do that as long as I'm here. I don't wanna go too far in one end of one thing and, and not enough in the other. Um, even just talking about student council again, some of the coolest times I've seen our kids interact, strangely enough, is when we're decorating for school dances. Because those are the times, you'll walk, you'll walk down a hallway and you'll see four kids that never interact in any other sphere during school. They are four different kids. There are four different kids. There's an athlete-jog kid, there's a kid that's just an all-academic kid, there's the band-choir kid. And all of a sudden, you'll see four kids, and they're all working on something for a decoration, and you sit back there and you think, that's it! Like, they're, they're getting it, like, those are gonna be four people that are gonna go out in the community, and they might be on their, the local school board together. Or they, they might be involved in a church organization together, and they come from four different backgrounds, and they're all working toward a common goal, you know? And I think if you walked up and down our halls, you see kids doing that on a regular basis, you really do. So, that's cool, and I appreciate you for, for highlighting that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is student achievement liaison, Mrs. Kelly.
Okay, so PM took care of the middle school for us during his presentation. Um, for Mr. Renner in the elementary, there are fifteen Wildcat Way students. I'll share it with the remainder, I'll email it to everybody. Um, he'd also like to give a huge thank you to Mrs. Alger for running an awesome book fair, and a thank you to the Bath Fire Department for presenting Fire Prevention Week activities for kindergarten, first, and second grade students. And he would also like to publicly thank the PTS for purchasing the Unity T-shirts this year. So that's out of the elementary, out of the high school. Uh, Mr. Jesko would like to, um, recognize the following students who have volunteered at the West Ohio Food Bank. Lacy Barnes, Abby Shepherd, Haley Maugh, Kaya Cox, Adeline Arn, Cole Helmig, Caitlin Shields, Madeline Steiner, Lila Cabs, Abigail Colreaser, Ryland Cash, Kayden Johnson, Sunny Hartman, Eli Steve, Isaiah Foster, Woodson, Micelle, J.C. Beck's. The following high school students have been recognized as Wildcat winners for the month of September and October. Emily Jones, Aliyah Young, Cyrus Benzman, Everett Benzman, Josette Morgan, Cruz Pock Trubino, Kinzer Sample, Kayden Sample, and Noel Bruce. The cross-country girls team finished fifth at the district meet. Um, and qualified for regionals, that's Penny Francis, Morgan Schrock, Rand Dieters, Caitlin Shields, and Kaylee Van Busker. Uh, sophomore Bill Benzman also qualified individually for a regional cross-country meet this week. Varsity volleyball team won their first sectional title since two thousand and seven. They play Waseon Tuesday at seven-thirty at Miller City. Um, the doubles team of Allison Harshenfeger and Riley Capel qualified for district's girls tennis this fall. And the football team is eight-one in twenty-two on Friday for a share of the WBL title. Through the courteous, or generous donation from community members, students in grades K through twelve can get a free ticket on this week's game. These tickets will be available from six to six forty-five in the middle school cafeteria on Friday. Gates open at six o'clock. And that concludes student recognitions.
Thank you, Mrs. Kelly. Next on the agenda is superintendent's report.
Okay, Community Action Team. Uh, on Monday, November tenth, the Community Action Team core members will meet with Garmin Miller representatives to review prior meetings and prepare for the next community gathering. Uh, this session is designed to cover all key topics and ensure readiness for engaging effectively with the wider community. And that, that wider community meeting is Monday, December first, at six PM in the high school auditorium. And all community, all community members are invited to an important meeting that will focus on developing a strategic vision and considering long-term solutions for our aging school facilities. Uh, your perspectives and involvement play a crucial role in keeping our schools vibrant, safe, and supportive for students now and in the future. Uh, please join us on that date again, it's Monday, December first, six PM in the high school auditorium. A strong turnout will help us work together toward a brighter future for our schools. Under staffing, I think last month they got Carrie Wade and said, no, we're, we're by book. Well, wrong. When Carrie became our transportation director, she left her elementary monitors role. Tiffany Hare moved from her two-hour food service job to take the monitors position, you know, and each time there's a posting. And then, uh, Emily Spina Bush filled the two-hour food service spot. So food service, I think, we're done. Uh, transportation, we're still short one full-time driver, but we have a trainee, may be available soon. Should be able to fill that, and I think there's at, at least one or two more substitutes people training to become substitutes for us. Uh, custodial, the high school's second shift custodian that we hired last month now works at the elementary after Darryl Durth took the outside custodial position. Uh, and tonight we'll be hiring a second shift, uh, high school, uh, custodian, Madison King. Technology, we hired Vance Potte last month as tech assistant, but he couldn't start until today because there was a holdup on getting his FBI, uh, check to us. But, I think we're good, I think we're there. Won't say for sure, but I think we're there. Under safety, Tuesday, October seventh, Jared Gessler, the Allen County Director of Homeland Security, and one of his deputy directors, Drew Moonshower, met with our core administrators and volunteered to partner with us on any safety training we would like to consider. We appreciate, uh, their attendance and, and their, their kind offer. On Wednesday, October eighth, uh, lock, lockdown drills were conducted in each of our buildings. Our biggest problems seem to have centered around our cameras, which, uh, you know, there's a delay, delay in them that we're working on, and it has something to do with going to the cloud and coming back down. And then we're also working to try to get the adjustment when you zoom in. It seems to go a little bit out of focus, but we think we can, uh, find workarounds for those. Uh, so the cameras were a problem, our telephones, uh, we found that we needed them in some places where we don't have them, like in a safe room. Uh, so we're gonna take a look at that. And then we also found that, that we need some more night lock devices for security in our doorways. You know, if you've ever been to my office and you go out that side door, there's no lock on that. I've never, I've never thought about it until, actually, uh, this week one day, when I was sitting there looking up, saying, oh, I think we need one on that door. Anyway, we're currently waiting for word from the Bureau of Workman's Comp regarding a grant to, to help cover the cost of the elementary school safety film project. Uh, that should be coming out pretty soon. When that does, you know, if we get word and it's positive, there's also another grant, another forty thousand dollar grant from Bureau of Workman's Comp that we haven't decided quite yet what we'll focus on. But we're, we're gonna try to spend their money if they wanna give it to us, help us, you know, improve the safety of our, our buildings for our students and staff. And then we are applying for a school bus safety grant that would allow us to put crossing arms and all-new exterior cameras on all of our buses. Uh, so we're currently in the process of putting that together. That has to be filed by November fifteenth. And that concludes my report.
Okay, next is additions, uh, to the agenda action items. We have none. Um, next is adoption of the agenda and action items. Do I have a motion to approve?
Do a dot figure.
Moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Kennedy, any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Lighty?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest?
Yes. Okay, next is superintendent's consent agenda.
Okay. I had made a recommendation for employment resignations. Uh, first off, we have certificated staff, uh, we have one retirement, Dr. Clark, uh, resignation for the purpose of retirement effective May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-six. Then we have a couple folks that certified federally funded substitute employment for the school year. Certified supplemental employment for, uh, uh, tennis head coach and girls' basketball, uh, eighth-grade level. Uh, certified substitutes that are approved by the Allen County ESC. And then certified spring and field placements and student teachers, we have one coming from Ohio Northern. Then we have, uh, recommendations for employment for classified staff. Uh, we have the classified staff member needs to take a leave of absence, that's on the agenda. Uh, classified resignations, that's one we talked about with Tiffany moving from, uh, food service to the monitor position. Uh, classified employment, uh, with a sub-bus driver, uh, and some of the others there. Classified employment correction, uh, Jimmy Dunn's custodian correction should be from year two to year six on, based on his experience. And then the change in Vance's contract due to the, you know, the late arrival of his FBI check. Classified seniority determination, uh, one of the meetings, we hired two people in the same department, and we had to do a coin toss to determine who had the seniority. The OBC president was in attendance at that coin toss, and so the results are listed there. Uh, classified substitute employment, uh, classified substitute teachers' aid and library assistance is approved by the Allen County ESC. Uh, substitute bus driver approval at twenty-five sixty-nine a run, and substitute monitor approval at sixteen sixty-four an hour. And we have the outside employment at four for, uh, some of our coaching positions. Number five is volunteer coaches for the twenty-five twenty-six school year. And number six is the, uh, athletic support personnel to be paid for out of the athletic fund account. That's it.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Sure.
Second, moved by Mr. Lighty, seconded by Mrs. Kelly. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Lighty?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Next is treasurer's report.
Okay, um, I'm gonna try to get through this somewhat quick, 'cause I've got a special treat for everybody that loves reports. Um, I'll try to get to another one, so I'll try to get through this part a little quicker than normal. Uh, as we wrap up kind of our July one through, or July one through nine thirty reports, uh, kind of that first quarter end, uh, revenue at seven point nine million, expenses five-nine, uh, net gain one point nine million, dating balance nine point three. Um, real estate tax money, again, that's kind of that first settlements end, so real estate three point seven million, personal property eight hundred seventy-nine thousand, or, um, yeah, eight hundred seventy-nine, and then we've got state aid over, just over two million, uh, homestead rollback five twenty-seven. To make up that seven point nine million. On the expense side, we've got the personnel and the retirement insurance again, and purchase service is kind of the big three there. Uh, again, spending for the first quarter, just five point nine million. Um, again, the, the real estate green there is kind of a little bit heavier with that, with that first settlement. The, the blue of the state aid will catch up as we get through the next couple of months here. Again, on the expense side, we've got the blue with salary and salary wages, and then the, the benefits in the orange and the purchase service in green, kind of, kind of where we've been as far as the splits. Cash balance, uh, again, that history part, uh, where we've been in September thirtieth, uh, you know, pulling back for the different fiscal years. You know, this year we're nine point three million plus seven point five in capital improvement funds. So we're sixteen point eight, you know, and last year we were seventeen point nine. And we carried on down, seventeen eight, seventeen three, sixteen seven, to give you, like I said, a feel for where we're at compared to those prior years. Again, you can kind of see the red with the movement of the funds, you can see the red would be this fiscal year, kind of where, where things are at, uh, July, August, September, where that red line's at. Uh, investments, again, pretty steady there. Um, Star Ohio ten-five, and SJS at ninety-two. Uh, again, the interest rates are still pretty favorable, so, um, again, that list is, the investment's pretty consistent. Food service, uh, ending September thirtieth, uh, kind of the, the federal dollars have not come in yet, so we're, the local money is the only revenue we're looking at, so fifty-eight thousand. Expenditures one eighty-six, so a loss of one twenty-eight. Balance there of six hundred seventy-five thousand, but again, the federal dollars should be coming somewhat soon. Uh, athletics as of September thirtieth, again, trying to see where football shakes out, should be a pretty, pretty big year for the football program. Um, the, the rec games are at home, so, uh, again, I think as we get through October, November, and, you know, I think we'll see where the football goes. But right now, football's at just, uh, almost thirty-five thousand, the other revenues are just over sixty thousand, for a total of ninety-five thousand, four twenty. Uh, expenses out of, of the athletic fund are forty-seven seven, for a gain of forty-seven thousand, opening balance of forty-four. So right now, the September thirty balance in the athletic fund will be ninety-one thousand nine. Uh, expenditures for athletics out of the general fund are ninety-nine thousand, uh, fifty-two. Uh, a couple of things on the, you know, a lot of legislative things still going on, still can, a lot of concerns there. Um, you know, I think for me, the two big ones are this, which I think they're adjusting, or I think they've made some adjustments on the one eighty-six six, the, kind of that retro bill where they're gonna make some property tax adjustments and kind of go backwards and take some money, actually, take money that I think we've already received and try to claw that money back. Um, so I think of all the property tax reform issues that we've been, you know, Mr. Estes and I have been kind of tracking, that one I think is the worst, 'cause it's actually going back and taking money we've already received. Sounds like today, we got an email late, that sounds like maybe they've got a workaround of, what, reimbursing us for any losses that we're gonna sustain. Um, so I think we'll get more data on that one. The other one, that, that House Bill three oh-nine, where I think we're giving that, the, uh, kind of the, the, the county commission, you know, county budget commission, the authority to maybe undo the vote of the people here in other, other districts, that still doesn't, this doesn't seem right. If we're gonna pass a levy, then they're gonna somehow undo that. It just does not seem very American-like, um, to say the least. Uh, so that one, again, I'll be curious to see where that goes. Couple of things on, a couple of things, I did have a slide kind of on the cat facts. This one we looked at before, when we talked about the elementary bond issue, was twenty-five point one million. And then that breakdown between what was LFI, what was the four point five million LFI, is twenty point five million is actually what the OFCC is gonna kind of co-fund. Uh, and that earned credit is actually five point nine million. I, I had some data that I was kind of looking at, that I was, that was kind of interesting. I had Garmin Miller was giving me some data going back to two thousand and eleven, when, um, when that project was kind of starting at the elementary. But it was kind of like our total, our total project without the LFI's. So it was gonna be that total master plan. And, you know, at that point in time, it was gonna be like fifty-two point six million for a total master plan. Uh, twenty-nine percent would be the state share, fifteen point two million. Seventy-one percent would be local share, again, thirty-seven million without the LFI's. So now, fast forward to two thousand, October twenty-five, and that kind of that master plan, that data. I just think it's interesting, you know, actually, I thought it might be a higher number than seventy-seven million. So going from fifty-two to seventy-seven, state share's going from fifteen million to twenty-two, and then the local share's going from thirty-seven to fifty-five. So, again, I think part of that data is looking at it from the standpoint of, you know, what's that number in October of twenty thirty-five? You know, obviously, we don't know that, but you get a feel for the inflation part here. Like I said, again, that's without the LFI's, so it's not really a number that, like I said, each, each project, whether it's a high school, whether it's a middle school, there's gonna be LFI's within that number. It's gonna be a little bit bigger number. So that seventy-seven million is gonna shake out to be a higher number once you add the LFI's onto it. But again, I thought it was interesting, inter- interesting set of data. From the desk of Bill Phyllis, I, I always get a kick out of reading some of his stuff today. You know, he was quoting this David Pepper, which I'm not sure who David Pepper is, but I thought it was interesting, his quote, when he talked about that in future years, you know, the ECO scandal was a big, you know, probably a six hundred million dollar scandal. But he said, "In future years, ECO scandal will likely be pale in comparison to voucher scandals of the future." And he said, "Here's three reasons why." You know, the system costs now expanded, or, you know, exploded into billions of dollars in the state of Ohio for the voucher system. There's absolutely zero transparency, to some level, I think you'd probably agree with that. And then his other reason was Ohio's the most corrupt state in the nation. Probably as you think about political favors, givebacks, kickbacks. And, a- again, I'm not sure who David Pepper is, but I thought that was interesting that his, his, his logic there of trying to look into the future on, you know, if, if the vouchers thing is unregulated, what does that, what's that look like? Okay, now, I can get into another one. Okay, now, I can get into another one. Okay. Okay, this one's kind of a work in progress. Um, I was tinkering with two things, one is a presentation that's in a different format, uh, it's called Prezi. Um, and it's got kind of slash, Prezi slash AI, so there's a tiny bit of AI in here. Um, but I was trying to, I'm gonna probably try to refine this a little bit, especially as we start talking about this whole concept of eliminating all property taxes. And just the path that, that, you know, probably the rocky road that that's gonna look like if such a thing would happen. So that was kind of where, um, okay, so part of this, part, there's data in here that I loaded, and then part of it's AI, part of it's AI driven. So, again, I'm gonna refine it a little bit. Um, but again, I think part of the, my project was to talk about kind of local government services. You know, there's a lot of different things that we provide, you know, and just, um, you know, the importance of a lot of those things. You know, and I think, um, you know, I think Mr. White kind of hit the nail on the head, talking about balance, balancing our, our schools, balancing our curriculum, balancing what the students are getting. And, you know, you start thinking about the elimination of property taxes and then re, totally redefining what schools look like. And, you know, and I think there's a lot of balance in here, when you look at the countywide county services. You know, there's a, a lot of balance on what, what the services are and what they provide, so. Part of this is a totally complete, um, you know, why local services matter, like I said, um, you know, like I said, part of this, part of this stuff is, like I said, AI-driven, which I don't mind. Um, you know, local services, you know, I think are crucial for having, you know, the best healthcare, education, and public safety. You know, again, as at the backbone of a thriving community, probably is. Um, does it support economic development? They probably do have job creation and it's gonna, you know, aim to support local businesses. You know, enhancing quality of life, I think we would all agree with that. So a couple of pieces that I was pulling was, I was just trying to get a flavor for the different entities and, you know, what their, you know, children's services as far as the, I was pulling from like the county auditor, what the tax dollars they receive. So like children's services, you know, two point six, two point six million dollars, you know, to support their programs. Uh, the mental health services were five point five million, you know, again, for, for those programs. Park district were three point two million, and like I said, these are actual numbers I got from the county auditor. Um, you know, what the dollars that the parks manage as far as tax dollars that they're putting in the park system. Senior citizens, two point one million. Uh, Bath Township, two point six million local services. Um, Apollo JBS, nine point five million, and again, I think that's coming from probably, that's probably all their tax dollars from all different entities. Uh, Allen County, seven point four million to support local services. Uh, the Allen County Board of, uh, Developmental Disabilities, six point nine million. Bath Open Schools, and I combined all the tax revenue, which would include the PI, the, the bond issue, um, and then our, you know, operating levies, you know, we're right at about thirteen million, when we talk about that support coming from tax dollars, property tax dollars. Again, we talk about economic development, uh, improved public health, you know, enhancing education. Um, you know, again, I think when, that type of commitment to say that you're gonna pull the property tax off with what we do, uh, you know, it's, it's, that, that's gonna create a gap that we can't fill. And like I said, some of this, some, some of this presentation, I wanna refine and, uh, maybe reshape, shorten a little bit, um, but I thought, again, I was tinkering with the format of it. Like I said, I wanna, I wanna keep working on this, but again, I think as we get in that conversation down the road of, you know, if that does become a valid issue, um, which it still seems like they're talking about that, to say a, a valid issue to remove all property taxes. You know, like I said, I'll probably rework this a little bit, um, but, you know, I, I think the proper, those services are vital. You know, sometimes I think it's easy to say, well, yeah, I, it's crazy, let's do away with property tax, that's not a great idea. But if we're not replacing it on something, um, that, that gap's gonna be created, and how long we stay in that mess, uh, you know, is very worrisome, I guess, if you like. All right, keep working on this part, but I did want to get just a little bit of a glimpse of, uh, Prezi with AI, so. Mr. Estes, we've got, there you go. We've got, we've got some AI work, working for you. All right. And, uh, got the donations listed there. Um, again, a lot of good things going on there, uh, fifty-two fifty from BTS for the uni shirts. Got two thirty-five from BTS for paint supplies, four thousand from Bath Loosers for the house subscription, a thousand from BTS for the wrestling. I think they're sponsored, two fifty for Tomo for, uh, to wrestling, and for another uni sponsor. So again, uh, great support from a lot of different folks, which, uh, we very appreciate.
Do I have a motion to approve? Second. Moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mrs. Kelly. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Leyen? Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Uh, the next one, we do have the January one twenty-six health insurance rates, um, yeah, this year reflecting kind of an eight percent increase. Um, you know, again, I think the COVID does a nice job trying to slow down the cost of some of the, you know, the medical and dental. Uh, with the eight percent, that's, that's kind of where we're at for January one twenty-six.
Do I have a motion to approve? Second. Do I have a second?
Session.
Moved by Mrs. Kelly, seconded by Mr. White. Any discussion?
We'll do a little bit, because I think that might be something for the future.
Um, yeah, as we, we basically, if the, if the teachers, if the increase is split, uh, by, if it's a bargaining contract, because I think if the bridge is split, like maybe in seven thirty, or it's being seven percent, the increase will teach you about thirty percent. So I think I'll say that any major plan out of that, for like the family, if that family plan is, should be twenty-three eleven. Out of twenty-three eleven, I think that always should be close to.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Leyen?
Yes.
Okay, motion to consent agenda?
Um, again, I think, uh, I've kind of covered most of the reports there, um, as far as the, what's on the, um,
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Two.
So. Moved by Mr. Leyne, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Ernest?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Leyen? Mr. White?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is item for superintendent.
Okay, item A is to approve the coronavirus certified mandate driver for liability purposes. B is enrollment numbers from Future Think. This is part of the OFCC process, and the number that, uh, they anticipate our enrollment being is one thousand five hundred and forty-four students for the twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty school year. That's up a little bit, they, they took the subdivision going in, raised it twenty-something students. But, again, that's probably the number that we'll be dealing with for the next few years. A resolution for payment in lieu of transportation for the twenty-five twenty-six school year. This is something that, uh, we have to do from time to time. Resolution to adopt special education model policies and procedures, as they're presented. Item E is the no-ask contract, and, uh, just, so you know that this is a five-year contract beginning July first, twenty twenty-six through two thirty, twenty thirty-one. And then we have a reconciliation payment to the ESC, uh, for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five second half, uh, from January to June of twenty-five. And then this is another one that occurs frequently is students change, need to drop out or add in, or it's impractical to transport. So we contract with parents that rate three dollars a day. And then the last is to approve the chaperones and all the tear speakers for twenty twenty-five, six, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second? Moved by Mr. Leyne, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any discussion?
Yeah, uh, sorry, that computer services corporation, I've kind of looked at that, and it's, that's for internet, or what?
Um, basically, technology in general, not just internet, but it'd be, uh,
Well, all my physical software comes from them, as far as, you know, not only, not only are we getting the software from them, but as far as, it's gonna be a support piece. They're probably doing some filtering, some filtering on the.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're, they're helping us to guard our network so we don't get breached. So basically, anything associated with the computers coming, the services coming.
And they're, they do a lot with the law schools in Northwest Ohio, and they're, they do a nice job. But, but yeah, like I said, it's, and we're probably getting one dazzle progress, but many of those programs are becoming, are being supported by them, um, so, and again, they're gonna serve.
Yeah, they store a lot of our information.
Yeah, as far as our back, yeah, they would be our backup for a lot of our, like, data, a lot of our digital data, they were backed up. And, uh,
I was gonna say, I, when I looked at the page, I was like, is that just hidden that? Holy cow. Like, man, I can play about mine with that bill.
Yeah, they, they are, they're kind of the backbone, the technology piece, you know, um.
Yeah, good resource also for the problems.
Because they've got a couple guys that've been there a while and, I'll call them kind of on the nerdy, nerdy side alike, but they're kind of high-end tech guys, they're just, they're good, uh, they do a nice job.
So, just, just a comment, so since Mike doesn't read all the resolutions anymore. I, item D, I, I just want to reflect on part of this sentence. Whereas Ohio revised code thirty-three twenty-three oh eight requires each school district to provide assurances to the State of Ohio Department of Education and workforce, that the district will provide for the education of children, and it goes on with disabilities. But, but I just want to point out, we have to pass a resolution that says we will provide assurances of education, that the state provides us no assurance of funding. So, well said.
Okay, any more comments, discussion? Okay, roll call?
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Leyen? Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest?
Yes. Okay, next is report from administrators, and I believe those were provided to you in your packets. Next is very, uh, public rights, not on the agenda, we have none. Um, next is items for individual board members, does anyone have anything?
I want to comment just a second for someone that stepped up on all the student tables for this Friday night, that's a heck of a dedication. That is, I, I hope that our kids take advantage of that, and, you know, lots of us, we had a big game for the cheerleaders and the band and everybody else, that, that we're gonna be now performing in front of hopefully more people than, for the people that weren't required earlier. And so, I, I hope the students get to enjoy that, and if you don't want to say, this is fun, you want to read the best.
Anything else? Okay, next is executive session, and we have no reason to go into executive session, so, next is adjournment. Um, our next meetings are our policy committee meeting on Friday, November fourteenth at nine AM. Um, we have a board study session Tuesday, November eighteenth at five thirty PM, and then our next regular board meeting is Tuesday, November eighteenth at seven PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? Second. Moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mrs. Kelly. Any discussion?
Everybody move back, come on, it's by five thirty.
Should be, typically, I think most of us are heading back to the gym.
Okay, roll call?
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Leyen?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
I gotta say.
So no, we might not be back. I'll be back, I'm coming back Monday, I'll, I'll be here.